And you're on.
Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order. The public is invited to join the remote public sessions. We need to start with a roll call of school committee members. Jennifer?
Here.
Cassie?
Here.
Heather?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Bill?
Here.
Joanne?
Here.
And Jane, thank you. Members of the public who wish to attend the meeting may join the meeting through the following link. It can be found on our website under the heading School Committee: Notices and Agendas for Upcoming Meetings, and it will list tonight's school committee meeting, and the link is right there. Per Governor Baker's Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via Montague Community Television Broadcast. And the extension of the emergency open meeting law provisions were signed into law as Chapter 20, Section 20 of the Acts of 2021. People wanting to see the exact wording may find it in the July 13, 2021 School Committee Packet. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as soon as practicable. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our visitors. We are live streaming and also broadcasting on MCTV, and a recording of the meeting will be available on MCTV as well as the GMRSD website. This would be the time for public participation. Policy BEDH has been reinstated to hold public participation remotely. We have not had any requests of people to speak to us this evening, but they are always welcome. And we'd like to welcome our Zoom audience. If you are in the Zoom audience, please remember to keep your cameras and your microphones turned off. Thank you. Brian, I think you're first.
Thank you. At this time, rather than doing this at the end of the report, out of respect for the work that has to be done by the new members of the administrative team, I wanted to take a moment and have them say hello to the school committee. Our new Director of Teaching and Learning is Jean Powers. Jean, if you wanted to say hello and maybe to the committee.
Hey, everyone. Thank you for having me. I'm super excited to start this work. This has officially been one week that I've joined the district and hit the ground running, joining the admin retreat and have just learned so much. Really looking forward to learning more about the district and building on the things that, the great work that the district has been doing. So thanks for having me. And again, I really look forward to being part of this district.
Welcome for joining us.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Jean. And our new high school principal, who started the day before Jean, is Mr. Christopher Barnes. Christopher?
Thanks for the introduction there. And yeah, I'm an old hand now. Well-tenured over Jean, I can tell you that by one day. So I'm Christopher Barnes. I want to thank the school committee and superintendent Beck for the opportunity to serve students and community members of the Gil-Montague Regional School District. I can tell you that I'm very excited to be here to work with faculty and staff and to ensure that Great Falls Middle and Turner's Falls High are the best they can be. I've been here, it's been, I guess, seven workdays now. Met a number of faculty and staff members, very talented and dedicated folks. And I can't wait to meet everybody else on the 23rd. I'm sure you all know, we also have a new assistant principal, Joey Cotright. And I think that we have, I know that we have an experienced, dedicated, and energetic administrative team. And we're looking forward to getting about the work of getting to know students, what they need to succeed, and supporting faculty and staff so that they can do their best work on behalf of the kids. Again, thank you. It's going to be great, and I invite you to come in and say hello.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Christopher and Jean. And I know that you guys both have to get some rest and have some things that you might want to do. So I don't want to keep you any longer. As I mentioned, I just wanted to introduce you at the outset of the meeting. So I'll go into my report now. You're welcome to stay, but definitely not compelled to, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, very much. So in important events on the agenda, the Playground Get Together sponsored by the Friends of Hillcrest was originally planned for Sunday, August 22. Sarah was contacted, and that has been moved to the day prior. So it'll be the day before, Saturday, August 21, at 9:30 a.m. There'll be a Playground Get Together at Hillcrest. Great Falls Middle School New Family Orientation will happen on Wednesday, August 18, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. Turner's Falls High School Ninth Grade Orientation will happen on Thursday, August 19, 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. Our New Teacher Orientation will be held on Friday, August 20, at Turner's Falls High School. The first day for all staff to start the 21-22 school year is Monday, August 23. The first day for students in grades 1 through 12 is Thursday, August 26. And the first day for preschool and kindergarten is Tuesday, August 31. And so those are the most important events upcoming. Other events and welcoming events from various schools are in the process of being put together and will be sent out individually by the principals to each of their school communities. Our update from the state/commissioner or overlooking the, I'm adding something to my report. It was my hope that this grid on the superintendent's report that reports out on cases in our towns and the surrounding towns and the percent positivity would no longer be needed. We did go through a couple of weeks where we had zero cases in both Montague and Greenfield at various times, which was very encouraging, but the numbers are, again, climbing. They've more than quadrupled in the state in the last 14 days. And although the increase has not been as precipitous out here in Franklin County, the CDC ranks Franklin County rate of transmission on a scale of four, low, moderate, substantial, or high. And Franklin County is currently rated as substantial risk of transmission by the CDC. In our various towns, again, the numbers remain relatively low. Only Orange is a town that's above six, but we'll need to keep an eye on those trends. The percentage of fully vaccinated people in Franklin County has increased just slightly to 61%. And the number with at least one dose as of last Thursday has increased to 68%. All of that has gone into the early communications. Melissa Bednarski and I met last Friday, and then subsequently Melissa attended a two-day conference at the Northeastern School of Health. And I know Melissa's here on the call, but I'm not going to put her on the spot because we have to continue to process some things that are related to our old safety protocols and make adaptations to those so that, you know, we're taking into consideration what we can do, where we need to shift to. After a careful review of the DESI Guidance on COVID Safety in schools and in Melissa's consultation with regional health officials, we're going to be starting the school year with the same safety protocols with which we ended the last school year and continue through summer school. This includes the following. All students, staff, and visitors will be wearing masks indoors regardless of vaccination status. Masks will not be required outdoors. That's the way we ended with our mask expectations in the spring. We will still maintain three feet of social distancing indoors with six feet distancing for eating. The entry and exit procedures will remain the same because it does keep students at all levels really from congregating in large groups for extended periods of time. The daily self-checks for symptoms at home will need to continue. And we're going to continue pool testing and rapid testing at all schools. It was another conference that Melissa had attended today was with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, talking about the resources with which they could provide schools to continue those processes. Students will continue to be masked on buses, and windows will remain down on transportation. The information that Melissa gathered will help us to make determinations about our district protocols for testing and quarantine requirements. If you happen to notice in the four to six pages of DESI Guidance that was put out, which left everything up to local communities, there were some changes in some of the elements of quarantining for people who were identified, students in particular, who were identified as symptomatic. And I want to be able to review those with Melissa and have her review them with our school physician and/or regional health officials to make sure that we're doing the right thing in our own district. As DESI has reduced the quarantine requirements in an effort to keep more students in school, we really have to look at that in conjunction with, you know, what is the safest thing for us to be able to do? How reliable is the binax? How reliable is the rapid test? And we want to do that consultation with healthcare officials before we put out our final information. I am going to send information out to families about masking, the self-checks, and the things that we expect to be in place for the start of the school year tomorrow morning so that they're at least aware and let them know that we're refining the rest of the protocols, and they'll be coming prior to the start of school. As far as the facilities, Gil Elementary School, the process of removing the asbestos flooring in the identified areas of the building has been completed. Currently, the floor is in the process of being installed. We're hopeful that the work will be completed by the end of this week. There is a possibility that some of the work may need to continue into next week. And Principal Lisa DeJolay will keep the Gil staff posted on when the floors are completed and the buildings, the building and the classrooms are accessible for staff. At Hillcrest Elementary, in discussions with the town's capital improvement committee, we decided that the best course of action related to the asbestos tiles would be to do a carpet overlay in the rooms that had loose tiles. Work to install the carpet should be completed by 8:13. And the work being done, the work is being done by a local installer, Kidder Hardware, out of Northfield. The district and the town will be evaluating Hillcrest's capital needs to make determinations on future building improvement projects with an initial meeting on 8:25. The Sheffield Playground, during the summer months, Heath Cummings and his staff determined that wear and age made some of the apparatus at Sheffield Playground unsafe. Those areas have been closed to use. And while repairs were expected to be completed this week, there emerged a supply issue caused by a shortage of the resin that's used in the Trex decking that we would use to replace the bridge. That, you know, the sort of a chain bridge that goes across two pieces of apparatus, and that's the primary thing that's broken. The company that we're working with estimated that the delivery has now been delayed to September 8. And so while it may come in before then, we don't expect that it will come in before then, which means at the opening of school, portions of the playground will still be off limits for students at Sheffield. And we'll keep the committee posted on when that work is completed. And that's it for the superintendent's report. We've already had the opportunity to briefly meet Christopher and Jean. So thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Does anyone have any questions for Brian about that information?
Cassie?
I would just be interested to know a little bit more about the temporary fix at Hillcrest for the floors. Just how long it will be there? Is it hypoallergenic? Is it, you know, hygiene-wise, especially in the midst of a pandemic, just with germs? I have an asthmatic child, so I know that carpets can be tough for him at times. That's all, just, those are my thoughts hearing about that.
I'll get that information from Heath if we don't have, I know, I don't have it now. Joanne, I don't think you necessarily have that now. So I'll get that information with Heath and then share it and email to the committee?
I'm sure it's probably standard carpeting used in schools. So it's been tested for all that, but I would just be curious to know all the details. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Okay, Business and Operations Report, Joanne?
Okay. I gave you some information on the SRR2 grant. So as you know, when we built our budget this year for fiscal '22, we anticipated using some of the SRR grants for, to cover some positions in our budget. And the thought is that we'll have the SRR funding through fiscal '24 and into fiscal '25. And then, fingers crossed, that our Chapter 70 catches up and we start getting more Chapter 70 again to help us beyond that when that funding ends. So the positions that we added for that grant, I put into my report here, we have the first grade paras at both Hillcrest and Gil, and we budgeted enough for two years for those paras, not just a single year. We also have an additional math teacher at the high school, and that'll be to provide additional support due to the pandemic and the lost time. We added an additional guidance adjustment counselor at Sheffield, and this will be, it'll help us so we have adjustment counselors every day at the schools. And then, you know, it will help with the increased rates of anxiety and depression needs of our students. An additional speech pathologist was also added for early childhood students to mitigate the language acquisition loss during the pandemic. And that'll be at both Hillcrest and Gil as well. We're going to continue the integrated technology resource that we had in place last year to help both teachers and faculty, staff, and families navigate the technology that they'll need. And then, as you know, we added, we have the expanded summer program that we offered this year. And so we budgeted into this grant enough money to have that same expanded program next year. So we'll be able to continue to mitigate that learning loss for our families. We have technology upgrades in there so we can purchase new laptops over the next couple of years for our staff. We have professional development funds set aside, and that'll be professional development specifically related to the pandemic. We have a pandemic nurse leader stipend and funds to cover some substitute nurses for the year. And then we have some instructional supplies that will be also related to the pandemic. So this is the second of our three SRR grants, and this is about $860,000. And we hope that this money will last us, you know, this year and some into next year, fiscal '23. And then we'll write the SRR3 grant to cover fiscal '23 and fiscal '24. Any questions on that? Okay, transportation. This is, I think you're going to have a conversation about this later in the agenda, maybe?
Yeah.
So, okay. So last year, we limited ridership due to the COVID pandemic. And we asked families to register their children to enable them to ride the bus. So this year, we're not asking students to register or families to register their students. If students live within a mile and a half or beyond a mile and a half of their schools and they attend their home school, which means a Gil student, a Gil resident attending the Gil Elementary or a Montague resident attending a Montague Elementary's, then the bus will be available to them if they live a mile and a half or more from the school. So the bus company has all of the student lists with their addresses, and they are right now creating routes first for the start of school. When they have those routes, they're going to be posted. What we don't know right now, so we have a couple of questions for you and a couple of things that we're going to need to talk about. One, I think we decided that we will have the shuttle bus that goes between Hillcrest and Sheffield. So that'll allow parents to pick up their students who are attending both schools in one location. So that we're going to put into place. The Montague residents in the past had ridden the Gil Elementary bus if they chose to attend Gil. Typically, when you choose to attend a school other than your home school, you are responsible for transportation, and that is the case. But we have allowed Montague residents to ride that bus in the past. But the bus gets crowded when we have a lot of students, the Montague students on those buses. The buses get rather crowded. And so we don't want to have to back up from something that we've added. But we've talked about this. So, you know, is it better to say, everybody gets a ride? And then, you know, a few months from now, if we have to limit the number of students on a bus, that we have to remove students from a bus? Or should we start the buses without the Montague students and then later add them if it becomes reasonable to do so? So that's a question for you. And we can have more of that conversation later. School lunch. So again, this year, we will be offering free lunch to all students in all of the schools. We are offering this through the seamless summer option that the state has or the federal government has extended through the end of this next school year, fiscal '22. So that's not the CEP, which is how we normally would get our free lunch. The, we can apply and qualify for free lunch, and we had done so at just Hillcrest and Sheffield in the past. And then we later added the high school, middle school. So all students receive free lunch, and we received a reduced reimbursement rate from the federal government. This is the extension of the seamless summer option where in the summer, all kids can get meals. And so this is all students, including the students at Gil that wouldn't normally qualify for CEP.
And Joanne, just a point, it's breakfast and lunch.
Breakfast and lunch, correct.
Thank you.
So we are still going to need some families, or we're going to ask the families to complete free and reduced lunch applications if they're attending Gil Elementary because the PEBT is still in existence, which is, I guess, food stamps basically for families. So any student that attended a school that qualified for CEP automatically got the PEBT card. But if they did not attend a school that qualified for CEP, they could only qualify to get the PEBT card if they completed a free and reduced lunch application. So families that attend Gil will still need to do that if they want to receive the PEBT card. And then, moving on to the next page, there is what's called Supplemental Low-Income Data Collection Form. So this is a new form. And a number of years ago, the state changed the way they counted our low-income students when they calculated our foundation budget. This is how we get our state aid. So they started looking at using the CEP information. So the information that we submit to qualify for community eligibility provision, which is free lunch in those, the Montague Elementary Schools and the secondary school. They started using just that. But some districts lost, some districts won in that. We sort of broke even, so it didn't really impact us. But some districts were really hit hard. So they've been trying to find a way to determine eligibility of more students that are eligible for free lunch. And so there's another data collection form. This is in addition to the free and reduced lunch form that we're going to have to ask families to fill out. And this will expand our eligibility for these low-income students to appear on our foundation enrollment, which could in turn increase our Chapter 70 or our state aid funding. So I wrote this all out, and I had a couple of people read it to see if it made sense. And it probably makes more sense if you just read it through than the way I'm trying to explain it. But this form, if we can get people to fill out this form, find a way to get people to fill out this voluntary form, we could see a significant bump in our state aid in fiscal '23. So this is going to be for October 1 of this year, which will in turn bring us to our fiscal '23 state aid.
Could I ask, Joanne, how this form will be made available to families?
We are, we're going to have to send it out, and I'm not sure if it's an electronic form or it's a paper form, but we have some information from the state, and we're going to put that together, and we'll send it out early on in the school year. And I know that's a time that a lot of families are getting a lot of paper to fill out, but, you know, that's sort of the timing of this. It needs to be done for the October 1 counts.
Thanks. Jennifer, did you have?
Yeah, I mean, it was a similar question, like what the requirements are for how we gather that, whether it's digital or physical. But I think, you know, probably you'll get more folks replying if it's an easy and/or kind user experience.
Yeah.
I don't know what.
It is a standard form that they created for us to use. I just, I'm not sure if it's digital or paper. So.
Bill?
Sorry, I lost my cursor. Is it true, then, that the real impact of this is not so much picking up people that would otherwise qualify, but in fact, the parameters of the program have been expanded so there are people that are not eligible for CEP, apparently, but would be eligible under new standards? And thereby, you have to reach out to them in whatever means of communication the district has?
Right. And it's not that the families are eligible for anything. It's the districts, the only way that the district could potentially include them in our low-income count by having them complete these forms. This has nothing to do with actual, them actually getting a free lunch. Everybody's going to be getting that free lunch. So, you know, it's going to be a challenge to get anybody to fill this out. You know, I've heard people say, you know, maybe we have a drawing, right? If you get something donated that you can give, give away to the winner, you know, everybody that completes one of these forms, fully completes it, then they could be entered into a drawing for some donated prize.
But I don't, I'm sorry. I, I'm not into the prize aspect of it. What I'm more interested in is the fact that the program is being offered to be expanded by participating in this survey, which adds data to what already exists and thereby justifies, to some degree, the federal government continuing to provide extended aid. I mean, that's just my take. I'm curious, is that your take? Or am I just speaking for myself?
No, I think that you're connecting the two things. So one is for the families, there's two forms. One form is a free and reduced lunch form. And that form, if people fill that out, then they can be eligible for the PEBT card, and they would receive that form of aid from the government. And that's if they don't qualify for CEP through a direct certification process. They don't qualify for food stamps or Medicare, you know, health insurance, right? So that's one form that they would fill out so they can get the PEBT for. Then there's a separate form that we would need, basically the same people to fill out, so we can get more money through state aid. But it won't give them free lunch. It'll give us more state aid. So it's two different forms.
Thanks.
Anyone else? I know we're going to discuss the transportation issue during business, but I just had a question that I've noticed that parents, of course, are.
We lost you, Jean. But I actually had, I wanted to say something in response to Bill, but I don't know if you're back or not.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I think my connection, there's something about the weather tonight. It's gotten a little strange. Joanne, I know parents are wondering about where exactly their child's bus stop will be. So can they contact, because MASCAS, once the bus routes are set up, to find that out?
No, once the bus routes are set up, because MASCAS will put them up on their website, we have a link to get to their website from our website. And, you know, if you look at the bus routes, you find the address that's near your house.
Okay.
Right? It's not that, because MASCAS is going to have a list of the kids' names and say, yep, your bus stop is there. Now, if they're looking at the list, somebody new to town maybe is looking at the list, and they're not sure which one of these bus stops is near their address. The only ones that we really try to say, you're. The only ones that we really try to say your bus stop is here and your bus stop is here is we have two downtown, two or three downtown Turner stops for our secondary students. And if they all go to Third and L Street, that bus is going to be overcrowded. So we have kids going to Third and L and kids going to Seventh and L for the bus. So we we try to designate which bus they should be on.
Okay.
Everybody else, you know, you you look at the the bus stops and you can find the one that's near your address.
Okay, once they're posted, and that should be within what, about a week or so?
Yeah, I would think it'd be probably in about a week or so. I think I'm hearing that some may already be posted, so.
All right, thank you. Anyone else for Joanne? Okay, moving on, school committee reports. We have a warrant subcommittee approval to vote on its accounts payable, paying our bills, number three, two, zero, three. They did eight, six, two thousand twenty-one in the amount of forty thousand, eight hundred twenty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
Bill, thank you. And a second, Bill, I might. Any questions about that? If people are wondering, everybody on the committee and anyone else interested can look in the packet that was for this meeting and the exact warrant and all the items on it can be found there. People are interested. All right, all those in favor? Looks like we have Joanna. Thank you. Yep. Thank you. That's unanimous. All right, moving on to business. First item of business is the policy review discussion, policy B D A, the annual organization. We've discussed it twice, and this would be a good time to vote if people are so inclined. The question came up, well, mostly for me due to the changes in the voting and the days and and all of those things like counting write-ins. Included in your packet is the current Gill Montague Regional School District Policy for Annual Organization. And also included are the Mass Association of School Committees Policy Model Language. The difference mainly being our policy as it exists now calls for us to meet within seventy-two hours following the annual election or following the election in the town that does it second, if there's at different times. There simply calls for at the first regular meeting following the election, doing the same thing. So I'm wondering what people think about that. Are they fine with ours? In which case, people just need to know within at least three days at the most after the election, we will have to hold a special meeting. Otherwise, if we change it, we will have the election at our next meeting. Mike?
I'd like to move that we adopt the M A S C language.
Alrighty, we have a motion from Mike. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Cassie? Okay, in that case, oh, let's open it up to questions and comments about that. Anyone? Mike?
I'd just say that I I think the changes are appropriate and will serve us well.
Thank you. The only other suggestion I would make is when I look through the notes from M A S C. As we usually do, they recommend that you cite a particular mass general law at the bottom of your policy, and they suggest mass general law, chapter thirty-one, section sixteen A. So if that's acceptable, we'll add that reference as well for people to look at. Anything else? All right, all those in favor?
I'll second it too.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did we? Yeah, I think we had. All right. I think that's unanimous. Thank you. Next on the list, a discussion about addressing pandemic learning loss. That would be Brian.
Thank you. So I sent a summary of this and I I won't read through every aspect of it. As the there are some key elements, but obviously our work last week in beginning the process of developing a three-year district strategic plan was very productive, and we did arrive at at language for five goals in four different categories. The primary basis for our research was a a two staff surveys, one for professional development, one that I put out separately at the end of the year, asking for strengths and needs and thoughts of staff. We also used the two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-one strategic goals. And really, the research underpinning of our work was the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Acceleration Roadmap. And on one of those summaries, I provided a link to the educator version of that on on the department website. There is also an administrative version of the roadmap, but the one for educators has far, far many more resources in it for this process. The research in the acceleration roadmap focuses on three key areas in which districts should focus their efforts in an effort to bring students back up to speed in addressing pandemic learning loss. The first is to foster a sense of belonging and partnership among students and families. The second is to make sure that we are continuing to monitor students' understanding and progress. And three is to ensure strong grade-appropriate instruction with just-in-time scaffolds when they are needed. What the most important aspect of the acceleration, the concept of acceleration is that the the plan draws a really clear distinction between the idea of remediation and acceleration. And the reason that we like to plan as a team is that all educators, unless they haven't completed the S E I or Sheltered English Immersion endorsement, is that we already have fairly extensive training as educators in how to bring, how to scaffold instruction to bring students up to speed to be able to access grade-level content. So this isn't a new concept. However, DESI is leveraging this for students across the Commonwealth. And so our students are going to need to be able to keep pace, not only here with students in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, but across the country. The basic difference between traditional remediation is that students mainly receive work better suited for earlier grades based on the misconception that they must master all past concepts before accessing grade-level work. So you'll hear the phrase, well, we haven't covered that yet, so the kid's not going to be prepared to do this work. Learning acceleration is different in that all students receive consistent access to grade-level work with targeted scaffolds to make it accessible. And that's sort of the foundation of the S E I principles in in helping English language learners who deal with this issue every single day with their language barriers. It really one of the things that you'll see in the appendix is that it it really creates a grid of, and I know you can't see it really well here, and it's not really going to be helpful to share it on the screen. But it focuses on six areas of articulating the difference between acceleration and remediation, self-efficacy, basic skills, prior knowledge, relevance, connection to the core course, and pacing and direction as being the primary considerations for teachers. And so this work was really the foundation of our commitment to the following areas, to arrive at the following district goals, to address the learning loss over the next three years. The first category is engagement, and this has both a family and student goal. The family goal, the district will welcome and engage families as active partners to support the academic and social emotional development of all students. The student goal and under engagement is the staff will welcome and engage students as active partners in their learning who take pride in their efforts and make positive contributions to the school community. The second category, which really has to do with that process of monitoring in in the roadmap is growth and achievement. Educators and the goal is educators will regularly monitor the impact of instruction on student learning and will make adjustments to maximize student growth and achievement. The next category is grade-appropriate instruction. Educators will deliver grade-appropriate instruction with high expectations for all students and provide scaffolding to ensure access to learning. And then the last category, which is something that, you know, one of the other features of the the roadmap is that this kind of instruction and this approach to instruction has really at its core considerations for inclusion and equity. And so we maintained an entirely separate category and developed our own strategic goal that educators commit to creating an inclusive and equitable school environment that provides relevant and accessible educational opportunities, embodies social justice practices, and affirm affirms all students' cultures and identities as that goal. And I wanted to share that with the committee as you guys begin the process of engaging in your goals. We do have next steps, obviously. We began the process of identifying data and work products that will allow us to monitor and report on progress in reaching these goals. And we need to develop a street strategic action plan with that that data in mind and have that completed for presentation to the committee and approval by the committee for September so that we can share it with staff and families so that school councils can begin to work with principals on developing their annual strategy strategy plan. And so that educators will be able to work on developing their student learning and professional practice goals and make sure that they're aligned with our district goals. Does anybody have any questions? I know that there's a there's a lot there. I didn't really say a lot about what's there, but there's a ton that's there in terms of looking at the roadmap. And it is filled with resources for teachers as well as administrators. And that was one of the things that appealed to us was, you know, really the ease of accessibility for things that people might not necessarily be aware of and the number of tools that are in there. Hi, Bill.
That sounds really exciting and progressive, if you don't mind my saying that. But in the in the realm of assessment, you said the one thing I'd like some clarification on is constant assessment of the of the progress of each student. Is that an allusion to or perhaps is everybody already accepted portfolio assessment?
Yeah, I think that anything that we do in terms of assessment could could conceivably be included. And for example, at the elementary level, they have a schedule of assessments that take place, you know, start of the school, beginning of the year, mid-year and end year to measure growth and and achievement in in math and reading progress. And at the secondary level, there's a variety of assessments that could be used, including both at the elementary level, you know, using things like portfolios or projects or tasks are also going to be informed informing other things that we're tracking. For example, one of the things that we were really able to clearly identify with a group, a group of really dedicated and thoughtful teachers in in the pandemic response advisory committee. And then some of the folks who run camps out there have kept us appraised of some of the observations that they've had in terms of child interactions with one another at camps. And the period of time that was spent in isolation, for example, is something that you know, students have an increasing amount of difficulty in terms of completing tasks or completing stages of tasks. So the idea of doing a project or a portfolio isn't just going to be, isn't just going to provide us the opportunity and a supplement to the sort of standardized growth assessments that we use during the course of the year, but it's also going to give us an indication as to how students are doing with recovering their executive functioning skills and what they might need for support to make sure that they're able to complete those stages of the process and begin to rebuild their confidence and subsequently generate their own ability to again organize themselves and keep themselves on target for incremental tasks over time. So yes, it's it's not limited to specific, you know, standardized assessments. There are a whole bunch of different things that we need to incorporate to make sure that we're monitoring a variety of things other than just, you know, we're not looking at MCAS scores as being a significant part of this. It is something that obviously we'll use and monitor. But this, these are really in-progress assessments, and the idea of doing a portfolio or a project is something that will help inform that for sure.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question for Brian?
I I very briefly wanted to say thank you also to the hard work of the administrative team during the week. There was a lot of time that we spent reading and arguing and building consensus around this language. And by the time we finished it, I think we were all very excited and committed and pleased with what we found in the that DESI had provided this resource, because as you know, as a committee, we've had our own conversations over the course of the last year about, geez, well, what are we going to do? And I think that the roadmap helps us to clarify how we're going to start off approaching things at the start of the school year with the intent of getting students onto grade level by scaffolding their instruction to provide them with access. And we really like that.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is discussion about issues of equity. That's also you, Brian?
And so again, one of the reasons why we chose the roadmap is that there are a significant number of resources within the roadmap, because there is an expectation that every every school, every teacher, every educator is going to be including inclusiveness and equity in their goal building as well as considerations for the way they structure their classrooms, their assignments. And it has resources like self-assessments for one's own implicit biases that are different from other types of self-assessments, as well as resources to help educators evaluate potential underlying bias in curriculum materials that may in fact do harm to students. And so those are important resources that we were excited to be able to share with our staff and collaborate with them on making those improvements over the course of this year. I wanted to also thank the leadership of the Gill Montague Education Association and President Wood. We did a great deal of work assessing our current teacher evaluation process and looking at what the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education had updated in two thousand eighteen to be the most updated sets of rubrics and tools. And I wanted to to share my appreciation to the association for collaborating with us, allowing the administrative team to share the research that we did with them and for getting back to us in such a a rapid period of time to allow us to be able to make changes, to be using the updated and and the most updated rubrics for teachers, counselors and school nurses and the administrative team. Of course, the administrative team didn't need the permission of the association, but we're deeply thankful that they looked at it so quickly and we're supportive of making these changes, primarily because there is a significant focus again in goal development for educators on equity and inclusion and using those lenses to include, which is far better than the old evaluation system. So thank you, Ron, for doing that work in such short order. At the secondary level, as I mentioned in previous meetings, student training of active bystanders at the high school and middle school is planned for the upcoming school year through quab and mediation. The new high school administration is planning to hold focus group discussions discussions with staff in the opening days of school to allow a new administration to assess the extensive training that the staff has received through Learning for Justice and to collaborate to determine next steps for programming for staff and students regarding issues related to supporting equity and a deeper understanding of cultural differences. However, we have made a commitment this year to do the student training. What we don't want to do is have the new administration be in a situation where I've made a decision to say, oh, we're going to do this this year, and it's something that they've already done. We should be able to identify the foundation work that they've done and look at what next steps are. And the best thing, I appreciate Christopher and Joey getting together with Gene and making the decision to carve out time on the opening day of school to meet with staff to allow them to provide input before we make those decisions. At the elementary level, elementary principals and director powers are working with the collaborative to to design professional development on equity at a foundation level on the early release days that we've dedicated for this purpose during the upcoming school year. The input from staff has been shared with CES, and we expect to hear back soon regarding their proposals, and we'll be integrating that as we wrap up our professional development plan, probably for the next school committee meeting. At least I'm hopeful that it will be prepared for the next school committee.
Thank you. Anyone? Thank you. Anyone have a question for Brian? Thank you so much. That's really helpful.
Thank you.
For the public that are watching, if you notice often people at the meeting will turn their video off at times. When connections are difficult or there's an issue with them, often turning off the video as well as the microphone when the person is not speaking helps their connections a little bit. Sometimes nothing helps, but that's what we try. It sometimes improves things a little bit. Thank you. Next, an update on fall COVID safety guidance. Brian, I know you mentioned that somewhat. Is there anything else new?
No, there'll be information, as I mentioned, I'm going to send information out to families tomorrow just so that they're aware that, you know, we're going to be masking regardless of vaccine, vaccine status across the district and the number of things that we can tell them that will be the same. But we won't put together the formal plans until I have an opportunity to consult with Melissa around what she's learned over the last couple of days at these conferences so that we can make decisions in particular about our protocols and requirements for quarantining as that becomes necessary.
Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda is discussion about school committee goals. We've been starting to work on these. We have our last version of such. And we thought we would kind of include this in every agenda for a while and look at the different details. I did go through and make a couple of notes this time. People might consider, if anyone else has anything they've noticed, I'd like to hear that first. If there's anything that stands out to you yet. Bill?
The one thing that stood out to me was in the general mission statement. It's one sentence that could easily be three. I think it should be three.
I, I can't say that I disagree with you. I did notice that myself. I'm not big on long sentences.
I'm sure there's adequate punctuation that could be put in place, but I'd start with separate sentences.
I, thank you. I think if nobody objects, I think I would appreciate that myself. I'll work on that.
Thanks.
Cassie?
Well, I was just thinking, I feel like it was just yesterday that we put these together. I, I liked how, you know, we had all of the, the separate goals sort of with their own focus area. Obviously, you know, the student success and support, you know, could be tied in more with the learning loss over the pandemic. But I think kind of having, you know, a lot of these, we, a lot of these goals, I won't say we haven't met, but I think that they're tenuous that we, it's continuous that we work on them as times evolve and things change within the district. Yeah, that was really all that, that I had. That I had thought, looking back, that there were things that, you know, we would probably keep the same. Communication and community engagement, obviously. I don't remember if we had a community engagement person when we wrote this goal. I don't know if that's something that we would, you know, be tied into it. Obviously, communication changes. I know that's been a focus of Brian's. So anyway, that was just my takeaway. I think that the what's in bold is a really good starting point for us to start fresh. I don't know if anyone else has anything to say about that.
Anyone else? Mike?
Thank you. Yeah, starting with mission statement, could we reduce it to like three words or something? Promoting executive function was a good one. I heard Brian say earlier. The, in the, the first goal regarding student success and support, the action step, the first one was supporting the Power Town initiative, which has come and gone. That's fine, but finding a common or establishing a common sort of values and goals around education. When I say common, I mean across community, staff, administration, school committee would really help. It's something to consider for the district. That was something that I was hoping would come out of the 21st century grant process that we would be examining the way, the format of teaching. And I'm not talking about individual teachers. I have no complaint with individual teachers, but how we as an institution provide the community with what it is we've committed to providing them. And one of the problems is not necessarily having a clear agreement about what that is. And not to get too deep into that conversation, but that, that action step, I think, was part of coming to grips with that. And so replacing that with something I think would be helpful. And it was about really engaging with all of the steps in education, in, including community and family involvement, et cetera, et cetera, which are very important and recurring themes throughout the evening. See if there was anything else really terribly important. Oh, and in number three. Yeah, utilizing an effective system of communication between stakeholders and school committee to address inquiries, questions, concerns, and then encouraging the superintendent to survey families, school staff, et cetera, on important aspects. These all seem to me to be sort of the same concept. What is it we believe in? What is it we think is important? And, and having that kind of basic agreement throughout the community and across the institution, I think would make some of the day-to-day issues we deal with easier because we, well, we believe in this and that doesn't equal that. So we're just not going to do that. And again, I don't want to start offering examples because that's, 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 that's something that's, that's the creative work. And I don't, I'm not trying to push it down one lane or another, but the fiscal stewardship, the governance, I think we've done very well, safety and security. Heath has been a great addition and Joanna is top-notch there. I think we could still do something with orienting new members and orienting old members for that matter, just orientation in general, some way of condensing the important aspects of the district. Well, some way of condensing that, making it more readily available when the time comes. As, as with so many things, you don't know what you need to know until you need to know it. So that we're never going to find out a perfect orientation where we say everything that needs to be done and everybody knows exactly what we need. But to the extent that we can package some of the, the, the recurring questions and, and, and issues, that would, that would help new members, I think. And I also just to let new members know, had the pleasure of working with Jennifer on the subcommittee. So we've had a few conversations to answer questions, but if, if there are, I mean, Joanna and Jennifer and anybody else who's, you know, been here for less than 12 years. If you have any questions, I'm sure Jane is available. I'm available. So just, that's just a side note, but that, that's about it. Thank you.
I think those are great suggestions, Mike. And to reiterate, you know, there, there is a policy to do an orientation for new members, but it's short and not that sweet because there's a whole pile of information and it's sort of like good luck going through that. But I think because of that, I think Mike's point is well-taken. Whether you are just here, have been on forever, don't ever hesitate to ask the question. We can't make decisions outside of this meeting. But you certainly can ask a question for where to find information, or you certainly can make a suggestion of an agenda item of something you'd like discussed for sure. I think I'm not working here again.
Yeah, you're frozen, Jane.
Oh my gosh, it's not that cold in my house, but
You're back.
I think, but never hesitate to ask a question about information or ask to put something on the agenda for a deeper discussion. That's always helpful. And just Cassie, I won't forget, but before I forget what I was going to ask Mike, could I ask you, if you wouldn't mind, perhaps to work on a couple of those ideas that you mentioned on how we might phrase them as we're going through this to reorganize it. The common set of values and goals, I mean, a great, you know, I'm sure you could just maybe.
We lost you again.
Try it again.
Am I back? Yeah.
You're back.
Yeah, that would just be helpful if you wouldn't mind just sketching out a few ideas of ways we might phrase what you suggested. That'd be great.
Will do.
And Cassie?
This is a question maybe for Brian. Is innovation pathways still a thing that's happening? Because just thinking about Power Town in the 21st, that might be something to align that first goal with. I know with the change in administration, it hasn't been the focus, but just a thought.
Yes. Yeah, the, in fact, we got approved. The second program was approved over the summer. And Christopher, now in his seventh day of work, is just getting up to speed. Spent a little bit.
Doing, I'm just kidding.
Really?
So yes, that's, that's still continuing in advanced manufacturing and the health and counseling sciences program will begin this year and the advanced manufacturing will begin the following year.
So I, I guess I'll just pose a question to the committee and nobody has to answer this, but just as a thought. Perhaps when we write those goals, such as goal number one, do we want to focus on something as specific as we did with the Power Town in the 21st or innovative, you know, innovation pathways? Or do we want it to be more broad and just supporting all possible programs such as that? I don't know the answer. I was just throwing that out there for all of you.
Good thing to consider, absolutely. Bill?
Am I on? I'm on.
Yeah.
The one thing that struck me in the whole report or all of the goals was the one around budgeting that, that referred to us as developing the budget. And I think I've talked about this before. I don't think the school committee of late has developed the budget. I think the administration has done a great job developing the budget. And I just would rather have that kind of thing as in developing policy within which a dynamic budget can be established. That's not necessarily an official wording. That's just me, but
Right.
And that was one aspect of a goal that I don't think the school committee should be involved in other than agreeing to the budget and supporting it.
Right. But I think with that in mind, if you wouldn't mind coming up with a little wording for that particular item for another time, that'd be great.
I'll try to make it as little as possible.
Thanks. Jennifer?
My AirPods are dying, so I'm trying to recharge them one at a time. Been on these calls since like four o'clock. Are you saying that we shouldn't be involved in the budget?
Am I saying that?
Yeah.
That's not what I said. I said, we don't develop it. We analyze it once it's been developed and we recommend adjustments if they're called for, but they also have to be backed up with some kind of notion on what was the intention and consideration of that. So no, I'm not withdrawing at all from the process. But I'm just saying technically, I'm not developing the budget. I'm not the one who's deciding how many teachers or paraprofessionals or nurses we need. Somebody else is analyzing that and I either recognize it or I don't.
Is there a quick summary for the process for developing the budget somewhere that I can access?
There are policies about budget. I, they're not always the most clarifying information. I think, I, I think as Bill mentioned, school committee role is more in terms of overseeing the development of the budget. Joanne also has developed something over the years called a budget book, which has a lot of information in it about budget and many things, which is a great work. She, I know the last year or so she's been slightly busy with other things and hasn't modified it as much as she was planning to. Am I correct, Joanne?
Yeah, I didn't. I did not get to the fancy budget book.
But she has a lot of the parts of it already. And I think that's something that is, would be quite helpful.
So Joanne, you developed the budget and you presented to the, I'm just, I'm not, this is not me being critical. I just am trying to understand the process.
Right. So we start the process in September and we, I send out budget document requests to all the principals and department heads. They submit information to us. They submit, you know, what they would like in their budget. They look at their current staffing and decide if they need changes in staffing. They write the reasons for all of that. And I put it all together. I estimate health insurance. I estimate our utilities. And then once it's all put together, then we bring it to school committee. We, we bring it to you in pieces, really. First, we come to you with the revenues. This is what we think the revenues are going to be. And then this is what we think some of the big expenses are going to be. This is what some of the budget drivers are. And then we come back in January with the full, full budget. And you look at that and, you know, discuss that, make some decisions. And then we come back to you again in February after the state aid comes out. Cause until then, I'm just guessing at what the state aid is going to be. So.
And what, when do you, I, I'm sorry, this last budget cycle from the finance committee is a little bit of a blur because this is my first round. When do you all present that to the finance committee? Like, is it, is it after the state aid has been established?
If I'm not mistaken, I, I, and I, I can't remember Jennifer, but if you look in the, the school committee calendar that Sabrina shared last week, I think that process is in there for us identified. And if it's not, because it's not part of a school committee meeting, it's, it's within that, it's within those three meetings. So we do an initial meeting with school committee and between that initial meeting and the third and final meeting where the school committee is voting, it happens within that timeframe that we need to get together with select, select board and finance people to present to them as well.
And sorry, you referenced a, a calendar that Sabrina sent and that was sent in an email?
It would have been in last week's school committee packet, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
Last meeting, school committee packet.
Right. We set the meeting dates and a few of them should have notes on them and particular things that need to be done by that time. And budget items should be mentioned on there. And as Brian said, I think when we meet with the towns is on there. If not specifically, we should put it in.
Awesome. Thank you very much for the refresher.
We do have that it's usually in early March that we meet with the town, but I think last year we might have met in December also and talked about it in advance.
Right. Often we meet twice and if, I'm hoping if anything becomes normalized with education, we could start up with the civic leaders group again, which is composed of members of the two towns and the school committee and budget is always something on the agenda when civic leaders meet. Any updates, any questions, any discussions? I'm hoping, hoping against hope that we can start to do that again. I mean, we could always zoom some meetings, I suppose. It's just more effective, but that is something I have on my wish list. To communicate.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mike?
One more thing. If you go to the website under the school committee page, the budget presentations for the last couple of years are there for your review. Also, the, our budget process is spelled out, I think, in the policy manual.
Yes.
But.
I couldn't tell you which part of it, but it's.
Yeah, yeah. It's either A, B, or C, one of those chapters. But it lays out in one page what, what dates and what we're supposed to accomplish on those dates.
Yes. Thanks. Cassie?
Just a side note for Joanna. Just a side note for Joanna May and Jennifer are, I don't know if anyone showed them the MASC website yet with our specific policy handbook and how to look up policies because that can be really helpful as well.
Right, you can access our policy manual on our website, GMRSD, at the very bottom of the school committee, the stuff in, on the blue. Or you can go on MASC and then you can also look at their reference manual for other examples. That's what we do when the policy subcommittee redoes policies. They send us information on changes and we look at their examples and decide if it works or not.
Yeah, I've fumbled around the MASC website, but I didn't know.
I was looking up something specific today and every website I ever use does not let me go where I want to go easily. I found it, but it was in spite of them to tell you the truth. Alrighty, and I think we'll continue with this, but I do have one other suggestion I dreamt up when I was looking at the mission statement. In addition to what Bill said, you know, I think we could liberally use some punctuation there, perhaps even a few less words. But I also was rather, I really liked some of the information I read from the Mass Association of School Committees about um, school committee operating in challenging times, which we seem to have more challenges than sometimes. And I really liked, I kind of combined a couple of their ideas into one possible additional piece we could put in the mission statement. And my first impulse was to word it as to commit to the democratic process, demonstrating civility and respect through thoughtful discussion during school committee meetings. They were encouraging that, you know, that is something that school committee can be a model of and also is the best way to operate. And I, I especially like it because I feel that this school committee is able to do that. And sometimes it can be challenging um, when things get more difficult. So I'd like people to consider adding that if they're in favor of it and we can, we'll come back to it next time. And any other ideas? These are great. These are great. Anything that you think could use a little different wording or you could improve it, please feel free. Anything else this evening? Okay, thank you. We will add that next time. Discussion of in-person remote school committee meetings. I don't know if anyone has anything new. I know we're hoping to be able to get back to in-person by the fall. I know I've been checking in with Tina on how the actual work is going and setting up the school committee room. I think she said it's at least half done. The actual setup with new micro, extra microphones and distancing and all of the things that we need to be able to do. I think we'll continue to work on that. Anyone else have any questions or suggestions? Okay. Uh, next is the discussion of the warrant subcommittee. When I looked at this, I thought, oh, I wonder what I thought. But then I think I know what I thought. During COVID, um, we talked about temporarily suspending our warrant subcommittee policy. We have been in favor as a regional school committee of having a three-member warrant subcommittee that would meet just before the regular meetings and sign the warrants. Because of not meeting in person during COVID, we simply named one person to do the signing and that happened to be me, which is fine. I have no problem with that. If it's something that I'm not allowed to sign, then we have Mike or Heather as backup and that's worked. Mike?
I was just identifying myself as the backup.
Okay, and, and a good backup you are. But I figured I'd better look and see if that was something that we changed because of new, of COVID regulations or if it was just something that was somewhere else. And again, I looked at our website and MASC website and the state government website and didn't find much help. But I did finally find there's a reference to Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 16A that says in the Mass General Laws, regional school committees particularly may designate one member for the purpose of signing the warrants. And then the information on the warrants needs to be provided to the rest of the committee at the meeting, which is what we've been doing. We voted to begin doing this at the beginning of COVID. And since that is a Mass General Law that we can use, we did not change our policy per se because we didn't feel that we wanted to change it forever necessarily. Because there is something really good about having three people in that role. But in the meantime, uh, that's certainly allowed by Mass General Law. So I guess if anyone has any theories, do they want to keep doing this for the time being? Until it's more accessible for the sub, warrant subcommittee to meet. Bill? You're muted, Bill.
I'm always best when I'm muted. Is the designated person, um, does it have to be the chairman or is it just a designated person for that subcommittee?
It simply says, it simply says, anyone can be the designee. That can be the permanent way that you do it, one designee. I needed to go in for various reasons anyway, so I offered to also do the warrants. Because I have to sign payroll and things like that. And since I had to go into the office, it seemed to make sense when nobody should have been in there unless they had to. It made sense to just have one person doing it.
Yeah, I think we all agreed to that.
Yes, yes, we had to vote it. Yeah. But I thought I should just research when and how and what was the ruling on it. So uh, it's still allowed unless somebody would like to change it.
To my advantage, I think you should still continue to do it into September.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you. I'd be happy to. Am I frozen again or am I just pausing?
No, we can hear you.
Oh gosh, good, good. Let's try to, before it cuts out entirely. In our packet, there are two banking resolutions. Joanne, you want to give us just the short version of what it's all about?
Sure. Each year we bring the banking resolutions to you, so it adds people to the bank accounts. So this year we have two new principals at the high school and so we're adding those principals, removing the old principals. It's really the only change on any of those forms. The rest of them, we have the same treasurer. We have the same assistant treasurer. Thank you, Mike. And um, all the admin assistants, there's not been any change yet. We will have to bring the student activity one back to you again next month because we'll have a new admin assistant at the high school. So this just authorizes those two new principals to be signers on the student activity accounts for the middle school and high school.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the banking resolutions as stated.
I move it.
Bill, thank you.
Second.
Mike, any questions about that? And that will be signed by Heather, who is our secretary or clerk. They refer to it sometimes as a clerk in the policies. All those in favor? Okay, that looks unanimous. Thank you.
So these documents will be in the business office for Heather to come and sign.
All right, thank you.
We'll have to let her know. I don't see her here.
I think she uh, had said she had to leave a bit.
Okay, okay.
She will, I will let her know.
Okay, thanks.
And the other item on our business is uh, transportation discussion and a potential vote on it. I know Joanne explained uh, some of the issues around the transportation. Do you want to explain it anymore, Joanne? What you're thinking was necessary at this moment and then we can see how people feel?
Sure. Um, last year, when we were trying to get ready for school to be in person, we did adjust the policy and the policy says that all students attending their homeschool that live at least one and a half miles from the school will get transportation. We used to transport kindergarteners that lived a little bit closer to the school, but that was removed last year in the policy. So the discussion tonight is really just about the Montague students that attend school at the Gill Elementary and providing a bus or not providing a bus for them.
Now, that is not included in our policy at the moment.
It's not, but as students, when, when families sign up to send their student to a school that is not their homeschool, we send the letter, comes from the superintendent's office that says it is your responsibility to transport your students to school. So, you know, that's part of their package when they sign up. We have been offering a bus for a number of years. I don't know how many years we've been offering a bus that picks up somewhere in Gill and brings the students to the Gill Elementary School. But that bus in the last couple of years has been quite crowded. And so, you know, if you're trying to keep kids at a certain distance in the school, it doesn't really make sense to crowd the bus to get them to school.
I could have, I will also add that there are uh, some families who live in Gill who have interdistrict school choice their kids to Sheffield and Hillcrest. And we've never provided transportation for those families.
Okay, all right. I, I had understood that any choice in any district that pretty much, well, at least ours, you had to provide transportation. But I think COVID has made it more important to take a look at how many students are on the buses because of the distance requirement. That's what occurred to me too. Cassie?
This is one of my like hot button issues. If I had my way, we would eliminate school choice in general from the entire world. Um, and I am really not a big fan of intra district, intra district school choice. I think it reeks of privilege and it's unfair and it takes away from the neighborhood schools and a possibly good experience that a student could have attending their neighborhood school. So I am not, I'm, I'm not a fan of busing Montague students up to Gill. I think that if you jump through the hoops to school choice your child and you have the privilege to do so, then the the responsibility of transportation should fall on, on the shoulders of those families. And that may sound rather harsh, but um, that I, that's just my opinion on the matter.
Thank you, Jennifer, and then Joanna?
Maybe I should have asked this question on another time, but is there a particular reason why? I don't mean to tangent the conversation, but are there particular reasons why folks would prefer to go to Gill uh, over Hillcrest? Yes, Cassie?
Go ahead, Cassie.
They're very two different experience, they're two different experiences. Gill is typically a smaller school. There's only one classroom per grade level, which has its pros and cons in general. Sheffield is a larger school and with a more diverse student body, there's oftentimes different issues and experiences that come up and families tend to choose based on what they feel will be best for their family. But I am just not a fan of school choice in general.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I hear you. Um, and then Hillcrest, you said Sheffield, but Hillcrest, because it's only kindergarten, first grade, and then Sheffield is like two, three, four, five, is that right?
That's right.
And then Gill is what, K through three?
Gill is K through six.
Through six, okay, sorry. Bye. Thank you.
Hillcrest is pre-K through one.
Got it. Okay. I see. Thank you.
Okay, and Joanne, I think I saw your hand.
Yeah, and I'm sorry if I missed this information, but I just wonder, are, are there, is there any metrics or data on the, why the family is beyond what Cassie mentioned? Like if it's a special needs issue, like if it's something that they cannot receive in Montague? Because I can see how for a family need, um, if it's something like that, I just am wondering if there's any information based on like, we couldn't provide it at Sheffield, but we could in Gill, vice versa. So not to be stuck on that, but I'm, I'm just wondering about that.
Well, I guess I'll start by saying the district is the same. So any services that a child would need would be provided at any of the schools in the district. And I think we have done surveys of parents chasing students out of the district, I think more. And there are many reasons as there are students, uh, families reasoning. Joanne?
I just wanted to add that we actually have some programs in Sheffield or at Hillcrest that we don't have in Gill. So there's actually more programs offered in those schools. Title one reading or special classrooms for students.
Is that ser, sorry, is that survey data available? Cause I'm, I'm just cur, I'm, you know, I think very curious to like Joanna, like what is, what is the reason? And it could be just small, smaller classrooms, but it seems like a, yes, oh, I can't.
Cassie?
I just want to clarify. So Title One Reading, Title One is a grant that's received when, I believe, and Joanne, you could correct me. Seventy-five percent of the student bu, uh, population is under the poverty level. Is that how you qualify?
I'm not sure what the percentage is, but it is based on poverty level, yes.
Yes.
And Gill doesn't qualify for that program.
Okay, sorry. Sabrina?
I just wanted to say that um, typically there are a lot of Northfield Mount Herman families, which are considered Gill families that go to preschool that then apply for Gill kindergarten as an intra-choice. We have a significant amount of students that do that, um, leaving preschool at Northfield Mount Herman and attending Gill kindergarten.
Thank you. And I'm not sure, Brian, you might not, you've only been here a short time. Maybe Joanne would know. When was the last time we collected data on school choice in general?
I just identified some information a couple of weeks ago. Uh, I have not gone through it, but I did find a file on a flash drive that Michael left me. So I still need to go through that, but I think that's choice out and maybe choice in information that was gathered over the course of two years. And I think that was at the height of the mascot con, concern when much of that data was gathered, but I can bring that to a subsequent committee meeting or, and or redact any personal information and share that in the meantime with the school committee.
Thank you. Bill?
I think um, I agree with Cassie. I'm not really a proponent of choice. I never have been. Bad deal. But regardless of that, looking at the requirements for eligibility to busing, it would be interesting in this instance, looking at our policy to eliminate the homeschool period and just deal with it as a district. And you have a choice within some limitations of which school you wanted to send your child to. But I don't, I don't um, come forward with any, any thoughts knowing why people choose choice to, to Gill from any immediate contact or conversation. I have my ideas of why people choice up here, but I don't want to bring them forward. But what I do see is that it is true that the Gill population shrank quite a bit, which opened up a tremendous amount of space, about half the school, to empty seats. And thereby intra-district choice made a difference to the viability of the Gill Elementary School staying open. And most people don't want to talk about closing or opening. People would rather talk about open school rather than closing a school. But that possibly could have been on the horizon. And then secondarily, in terms of the transportation issue, if you did eliminate the home thing, the homeschool wording, then all the kids from Montague would be eligible to go to get a bus to Gill if they were choiced in. But that would create a, a nightmare, night, a nightmare trying to construct those bus routes. So I think the pickup in Riverside was a viable option and minimized the amount, even though it's only four miles up the road. I don't know how. I don't know how all the children from Montague get to Riverside to pick up the bus. But that's a bus route that already exists that was, in fact, short of students. And living right next to the school practically at quarter past three every day, I can see, watch the two buses leaving Gill School or eight o'clock in the morning. I try to sleep through that. But anyway, the buses don't, either all the children are really short in a K to six school, or the bus is primarily empty. And so I do think that there's, we have a lot of wiggle room in all of this. But I understand the desire, the perhaps necessity to, to push the hard line. But I just wanted to express those thoughts.
Thanks. I think I saw Cassie's hand and then Jennifer's.
I mean, there's a lot I could say on this topic. I think Bill has a, a good point about just opening it up to a lottery and then busing whatever kids get into Gill, into Gill, because what we run into is we run into a school with a great amount of privilege because there's families that can get their children there because they have a vehicle and they have means to apply for school choice and whatnot. And then we end up with a school that doesn't have that privilege because there's kids that just have to walk across the field to get to school. Um, I, I don't know. I could talk about this all night, so I won't keep going, but um, that's just my thought on it.
Thanks, Jennifer?
Yeah, it's interesting to hear because it feels like a different situation if it's um, well, the Gill School is mostly empty. And therefore, you know, then maybe busing students or managing the busing students there makes sense based on the alternative of like maybe the school closing or whatever. But I, I totally hear Cassie what you're saying too. And I think Bill made some good points and I, you know, I'm um, I'm learning.
It is a learning curve. Joanne?
So I just wanted to add two comments. Um, the, we had had trouble a couple of years ago with the buses, the school choice bus going to Gill and had some problems on the bus because of the overcrowding. And we had to change a bus route, so there were less kids on that bus. And sort of adjust that. And then the other part, the other thing I wanted to say is that the class sizes in our elementary classrooms between Montague and Gill are all relatively similar. There's not larger class sizes in Montague than there are in Gill. I think they're, they're all pretty similar. There are three classes of every grade in Montague, and so there's more flexibility to move those kids from classroom to classroom. But the overall, you know, if there are somewhere between fifteen and eighteen kids in a classroom, that's pretty, pretty standard in the past. You know, who knows what it'll look like as we come into this year, but hopefully we're around fifteen to eighteen kids in a classroom.
Okay, Joanna?
This may sound naive, but I'm new. Um, are students choosing from Gill to come to Montague? And does a bus bust them to Montague that way?
They are choosing, but we're not busing them.
Okay, and is that just because we don't bust them or they're, is not a large enough number for us to consider?
Joanne?
We just never did. I think, you know, I'm not positive, but I think a number of years ago, like a very long time ago, maybe when the Montague Center School closed, we offered a choice for some families to go to Gill. And as, because Montague Center was a small school with one class at every grade or maybe two at every grade. And this was another option for those families in, instead of choice to go. And so that bus has just been around for a number of years. But I don't know for sure. You know, I'm just assuming that's where it came from. You know, we don't offer that same option for the Gill families that choose Montague. And maybe those students really are choosing Montague for a program.
Okay, yeah, I just, and I just wondered out loud, that I just, it was just something I'm thinking about as we're talking about choice and like, as I think about equity and needs, um, just about those families in Gill, if they're not getting the busing either, I ju- just thinking out loud.
Yeah.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
And I, I apologize, but I think we needed to have this conversation, even though it was a little tangential to get at what we need to do, which, would you remind me, Joanne? Are you asking us to change something or not change something? Cause I've sort of forgotten.
Yeah, I'm just asking for you to decide if we're gonna open up the busing that goes to the Gill Elementary School to our Montague students or only to our Gill students.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to that effect if somebody would like to make it.
So I move to not open the Gill bus to Montague students at this time.
Sorry, I, I just have one more question. It feels like, I mean, does it, is it correct that if we do it one way, we should do the other way? Or, I mean, if we're busing to Gill, wouldn't we then also bus to Montague?
Well, actually, your, her motion is not to.
No, I know, but the conversation leading to her motion, to Cassie's motion, it sounded like, it was like, are we? And it feels weird to ask to devote on one of those things. It feels like if we're gonna vote on it, it feels like we should vote on both things.
So then maybe the vote should be to only bus to the home elementary school.
The other, the other consideration is, um, I don't know, is that we have to vote. We could just choose not to vote because as of right now, the school committee had voted to not bus the students to Gill from last year. So we could just leave our practice as is and not take a vote at all.
A good point. I was wondering about that. That is another option, which Cassie, you can reconsider if you want.
Yeah, I'll withdraw my motion.
Thank you, Bill. You're muted again.
Okay, um, I just want to add that based on parliamentary procedure, I don't think you can make a negative motion. So the motion would have to be, Cassie, you've withdrawn it, so this is a moot point.
Right.
But you have to make a positive motion and request a negative vote.
Right, and that's great information. I forget that sometimes, Bill.
I was wondering why it felt so weird.
I, I get caught up in the what do we want as opposed to what we have to say? All those rules. Okay, so I guess the general consensus maybe, I'm gonna take maybe a, a thumbs up if we're not voting on a policy. Are people in favor of leaving it the way we had decided to deal with the busing at the beginning of COVID? Does that express it?
Right, only busing within communities.
Only busing within the communities. Okay, thank you. Thank you all for being patient. I think my brain's getting tired. Jennifer?
Sorry, but um, I forget where we landed on the, the metrics around surveys regarding choicing, especially at the elementary level with, between Montague and Gill. Are we gonna receive information from Brian about that? I can't remember where we landed on that.
Yeah, Jennifer, I'm gonna look through whatever I ha- whatever Michael left me and see how, see what it, what it is and whether or not it would be useful for, not just the committee, but for the admin team as well. Okay?
Awesome, thanks.
I, I had been thinking, because this question should come up every so often about why families choice and why they choice out. Once COVID arrived, we were doing other things, but I kept thinking, if things will ever settle, that's probably a survey we should put out again. I don't think it's harmful to put it out every so often because reasons may change, answers may change. But data and information is always good. So again, I'm hoping things might someday be more stable. I could hope. Thank you. Uh, the only other item is approval of minutes from July twenty-seventh. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Mike, thank you. Second? Bill, thank you. All those in favor of the minutes? Thank you very much. Please, any agenda requests, get them to Cassie, Brian or myself. We generally meet the Tuesday of the week before our next meeting. Dates of the next scheduled meetings are, we decided not to have the special meeting on August seventeenth unless somebody thought otherwise there, I'd entertain their theory, but I think we decided not to. In that case, our next regular meeting will be August twenty-fourth and will still be a virtual meeting at six thirty. Anything else that we've forgotten? Okay, again, thank you so much for all your thoughtful discussion.
Let's see, you hit your mute, I think.
I was muting myself. There's a thought. I think I've talked too much. Um, thank you all for your thoughtful discussions and now we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Cassie moved and Mike seconded, and I hope there's no discussion. We'll just take a vote. I, I think we need to do a, a roll call vote to adjourn. I think all votes should be, and I keep forgetting that. I mean, I'm not sure, but let's just do that. Jennifer?
Yes.
Cassie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Bill?
Yep.
Joanna?
Yes.
And myself. Did I miss anyone? Nope, I think that's it. Thank you all. I think that's it. Good night.